And offering you a rational and unbiased perspective on current events and life in Tampa Bay. He's a successful entrepreneur, published author, top listing agent, a real estate and finance expert that goes to bat for you every day as a consumer advocate. Your host and the consumer quarterback, Brandon Rhimes.
Yes, here we are again, another day committed to being your consumer advocate, helping you understand your buying decisions and making you just a bit more street smart here on the Consumer Quarterback Show. We want to help you win in any marketplace. Save our hotline number in your phone at some point. You may need it. Call or text our hotline, 813-750-0550. Also bookmark the website, consumerqb.com. You can see links there to all of our expert contributors and we work with a lot of great radio personalities, radio partners, expert contributors on the show, ranging from CPA, financial advisors, all types of great attorneys. So if you ever need any legal advice, we can help you there. Home services, we got you covered with home services. Of course, real estate credit, finance, estate and tax planning, so many different ways we can help you here on the Consumer Quarterback Show. And we greatly appreciate our Salem radio family out there for protect or for, you know, working with our, our partners here locally, you know, over eight years, eight years now on air. And it's all about supporting that local economy. So we want to help you win, support the local economy. One of the best things you can do is shop local, shop small right now, and we really appreciate that. So we've got a couple of hot listings. We always like to feature our real estate properties. This, this segment is sponsored by Platinum MVP Team at Keller Williams Realty. And we've got a couple of hot listings, 1010 Bay Esplanade. This is a gorgeous single family home with an extra apartment on the side as well. Rental apartment built in, North Clearwater Beach, beautiful opportunity, Millionaires Row, minutes, just a two or three minute walk to the beach, 3151 square feet, four bedrooms, three bath, two car garage, private apartment and a private sun deck. Great opportunity to own real estate right here in Tampa Bay, price point around 800,000 or so. We also have some great opportunities here in downtown Tampa. We've got 801 and 803 Palm Avenue, right in downtown. It's also attached to a property called Talia Faro as well. So we've got three units in one there, $750,000 each and three side by side lots. So you've got about 1,700 square feet in lots, investment opportunity, minutes to downtown, and it's an urban mix. So great opportunity to potentially rezone, lots of things you can do there, and it's got income built in. See all of our listings at platinummvp team dot kw.com. And this segment is brought to you by Brothers Easy Moving, the official moving partner of the Consumer Quarterback Show. Reach out to Brothers Easy Moving for local or long distance moves and make sure you let them know the real estate quarterback sent you. All right, we've got a special guest in today, Sandy Merman. Welcome in.
Well, thank you very much. Beautiful day.
Absolutely, really is. So former state house rep, county commissioner, and so you've been, you've been in the political arena for quite a while.
I have, I did have a six year break.
Okay.
And I did have a career before I went into the state house. So, um, you know, my story's pretty simple. I went from being a businesswoman, worked at Xerox for many years and took that, I guess, all that sales and marketing that I learned in that organization and applied to some nonprofits that deal with child abuse. And then I went to the legislature and just went to work and got a lot done for the county, for children, families. That's really what I think is important is to build policy around the, the real, the real backbone, I think of all of our communities is our children, our families. And then took a six year break.
The family too started to jump in because it seems like more and more you hear like the nuclear family, you know, the, the actual where the morals, the values are being taught. I mean, it seems like we've gotten away from that as a, uh, you know, some of the mainstream media and folks out there, but, but really it comes down to, you know, what are the morals that are taught in the home? What are the values that are taught in the home? And those seem to carry through throughout all parts of life.
Well, I think people are busy and they're going to rely on others to do that for them, especially in our schools. I'm very nervous about, you know, what's being going into our schools now to teach our children about all kinds of issues that really need to be taught at home.
Yeah.
Those values need to be formed when the children are young and see the family together. And I think, just think it's one of the most important things we do.
Yeah, family is such a key point. Started to interrupt you were on a kind of a roll there.
Really no, it's just finishing my story. I turned out of the legislature, I rose to speaker pro temp, had a very successful career and really stayed home and raised money to build the new children's museum downtown, Glazer Children's Museum. And then somebody talked me into run for the county commission and did that for 10, last 10 years. So it's been really good and I just believe wholeheartedly in the give back philosophy and to do what you can to help others.
Right, yeah, absolutely. And if you just joined us, we're talking with former state house rep Sandy Merman here on the Consumer Quarterback Show, county commissioner as well, Hillsborough County. And yeah, so, so we do have, what a great place to live, work and play, you know, is Tampa Bay. And I'm kind of teasing at a, a potential run for county commissioner in Pinellas County or maybe a state run, I'm not sure. I feel like I have a calling to get involved in some capacity. But what do you think are some of the biggest challenges facing, you know, not only Tampa Bay, but, but the state of Florida right now?
Well, um, it obviously COVID is because it's starting to affect state budgets.
Yes.
And especially state and local budgets. And I think those are, that's kind of the fuel that keeps our communities going, you know, roads, garbage, you name it, they do it.
Yeah.
Parks. So I think it's just, sorry, the pollen is so thick, my car is completely covered in green.
Time of year, isn't it?
Yes, I think half of it's in my throat. But no, I, I just, COVID is, is critical. I think, um, what the legislature can do with any land use policies to bring some common sense back to, you know, developers are not the bad guys.
Right.
They're the ones that help have the American dream for people that really have always looked forward to homeownership. Um, I think the legislature is going to, needs to do something in the child welfare area and help clean up some of those laws. But there's, they've got a, they've got a big plate full up there, so they'll have a busy session.
Yeah, exactly. And I like what DeSantis just did for, uh, you know, big tech, fighting it back against big tech, saying, hey, listen, if you start, uh, you know, canceling some of our, you know, either, either party really conservatives is, you know, more likely going to be canceled. But if you start canceling either party, I think it was something like a hundred thousand dollar a day, fine, that these tech companies could face. I mean, I love to see common sense coming in like that and, and, you know, different things that they're doing to protect us. I want to go back to Hillsborough County, for example, for, for a moment, uh, because I believe we just increased the impact fees, speaking of builders and developers, the impact fees were just increased, uh, I believe it was up to, uh, was it 9,000 to 25,000, something along those lines?
Yes, and they're getting ready to do it again.
Wow.
To really take a poke at them one more time. Um, you know, this is, listen, for every house that's built, they have created two and a half jobs.
Right.
And this is a job creation issue also, because if you, which the commission is in that mode now, uh, completely slowing down development, um, or stopping it if they can. And I think just use a common sense approach. If, if you want to make the development smaller, or if you want to add roads to, you know, what you're approved, whatever you want to do, but work it out, but these people are going to move here.
Right.
They are coming here in droves right now because of all the stringent policies in New York going on with COVID.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. In New Jersey and, you know, lots of other states, California, I mean, the homeless problem out there, a lot of the, the challenges that you see in other markets. But, but yeah, so the, so the impact fees, okay, on one hand, yes, we need, we need more roads, sewer, you know, the infrastructure, but you know, how much are they going to hurt? Uh, you know, so it's a balance, right? It's, it comes into a balance.
Oh, right. And also I think you have to understand impact fees, any fee that is imposed on someone that's building a home is not going to be paid for by the developer, it's going to be passed on to the home buyer.
Exactly, yeah.
Total. And so you're not hurting them at all. But what you're hurting is the opportunity for somebody to own a nice home and live in Hillsborough County where, which is the greatest place to live, work and play.
Absolutely. Hillsborough, you know, Tampa, St. Pete, Clearwater, Palm Harbor, just some really great areas. Bradenton, Sarasota, uh, best, you know, area in the country, uh, you know, absence of estate income tax, all the great stuff we've got going here. Um, so if you just joined us, we're talking with Sandy Merman here on the Consumer Quarterback Show, former state rep and county commissioner here in Tampa Bay, Hillsborough County. You are also working with the Center for Women. Let's talk a little bit about that.
Yes, I just went on the board for the Center for Women and I was so excited to get the call from the CEO, Ann Madsen. She, it's, it's an organization that I've been helping for years. Um, they've, they're such a great partner in the community. It's in a very old historic home on Hyde Park Avenue going on to Davis Island. But it's, I'll tell you what, what a great place that women can go to. But the one thing I love and which really attracted me to them was their Women's Business Center.
Hmm, that's pretty cool.
And they've got Dr. Carrie Sizmansky over there, who, and I hope I pronounced that right, but she is a phenomenal leader. And what she's doing is she's taking women entrepreneurs and really giving them all the skills and education they need to help their business, well, if they're starting a business, help them start it. If they need to grow or figure out how to run and be more profitable or what, more successful, um, she'll help them, give them all those tools. And I really want to help them, I want to help get that going because at Hillsborough County, I started the Entrepreneurial Collaborative Center.
Oh, yeah.
Which is a huge center down Ebor City. And that has, that has helped so many of our entrepreneurs and business leaders here in the community. And so, um, now that I'm not on the county, I can use my talents and go and help the Women's Business Center at the Center for Women. And I just think the counseling, the advice, um, they actually do the ship program, they help seniors with home improvement projects.
Yeah.
And so they just do so much for so many people.
Yeah, that's awesome. And entrepreneurship and, and you know, equipping women, uh, some, some pretty good stuff there. And I think too, more and more people, more and more children maybe need to be taught because they're coming out of school, you know, for the longest time, even my generation specifically, it was like, oh, go get your degree, go to a four-year college, you know, it was really kind of hammered down. But I think now more than ever, especially even in Tampa Bay, uh, you look at the need for skilled workers, different types of skilled, not only tech, but also, you know, just the plumbers, the electric and, you know, electrical, uh, the contractors, you know, there needs to be a little bit more placement for that as well.
Well, there is a Women's Business Minority Section, um, in the small business world, uh, where I think most corporations satisfy a portion of their hiring or contracts to women and minorities. And I think that's another thing that Carrie will help and with my help as a board member to help really get that information out there and help more women get some of these great contracts.
Yeah.
And our, and help be more productive and help their families and help everybody in the community.
Yeah, that's awesome. All right, so let's talk a little bit more about, you know, going back to some policy stuff, like, you know, looking at the, the state legislation, uh, even locally on it. What do you, what do you see over in Pinellas? You see anything particular in Pinellas, Pasco? I mean, there's a lot of growth over there too.
Oh my gosh, I mean, Pasco is booming.
Yeah.
Pinellas, I think it's kind of reached their max, so to speak. I mean, you have a lot of redevelopment going on.
Right.
Uh, which is really always good in a county, but I think Pasco is the next Hillsborough County.
Big time.
They're really moving in and, um, I think what they can't find in Hillsborough, they go to Pasco and they'll find it there.
That's right. Yep. And it's just booming up of that 54 corridor, that whole area is just really remarkable.
Yeah, yeah. I went, was up there visiting with Catherine Starkey, who's a county commissioner, Pasco County Commissioner, and, um, the other day, and she took me on a tour and it's amazing to see how much it has grown. It reminded me of Brandon like 20 years ago.
Right.
Or 25 years ago.
I could imagine.
Where it was just pastures and all that, but now I think, and now they're going to have to deal with land use issues, just like we did.
Yeah.
Or have done or doing in Hillsborough County.
Yeah, the thing that worries me a little bit is sustainability, you know, the water, there's only a certain amount of water, I mean, the resources, got to be careful with that. We've got about a minute left, a lot of places we could go with that last minute, but final thoughts?
Well, um, I'm just, I'm happy to be here with you, Brandon. I think you're an up and comer and I just think this show is great. I've been sitting here with Bill Buckley for many years.
Yeah.
And, um, just love Salem radio, but I just hope that people will, um, start to have more faith and trust in their government, um, as the years go along here now. We've had a lot of turmoil the past, gosh, past two years. I mean, fires and storms and riots and, um, you name it, we've had it. And I think we are going to come out of this stronger, but, um, they need to really start to look at politicians and who they're electing and what they stand for.
That's right.
And what their values are.
Exactly.
Because this is how we're going to make our county stronger and better.
Yeah.
And not go in a very extreme liberal way.
Yeah.
And have more taxes. We all know that less taxes, uh, more personal freedom and individual responsibility and less government is going to make our community safer and healthier as we go forward.
Absolutely, right on. Well, great stuff. Thanks so much for joining us and I'm sure we'd love to have you back at some point.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure, absolutely.
Really enjoyed it.
All right, absolutely. Coming up, we've got Victor as well. He's, he's representing Chad Irrigation. We talk a lot about, you know, real estate and different contractors on the show and consumer advocate tips from those perspectives as well. So Victor's a wealth of knowledge when it comes to, uh, home irrigation, different ways to, uh, add, uh, different, um, structures to your property. And also coming up, we have our feel-good story of the day. We've got a restaurant owner spent $2,000 of his own pocket money to promote his competitors. Interesting story. Stay with us right here on the Consumer Quarterback Show and check out consumerqb.com.
This is Warwick Dunn and you're listening to the Real Estate Quarterback Show hosted by my man, Brandon Rhimes. To get in touch with Brandon, call 813-670-7372, online at consumerqb.com.
My friends, when choosing a listing agent to sell your home, their track record is critically important. Dennis Prager here for Brandon and Lindsay Rhimes, owners of Platinum MVP Team at Keller Williams Real Estate. They're consistently rated by the MLS in the top 1% of all Tampa Bay Realtors, and that's a big deal. Brandon and Lindsay are always among the top Realtors in the state. Call them today at 813-750-0550.
Find them at platinummvp team dot kw.com. Selling commercial or residential property? Don't leave money on the table. List with the Platinum MVP Team at Keller Williams Realty. I'm Brandon Rhimes. Reach me at 813-670-7372 or platinummvp team.com.
My name is James D. Jerome, and I produce the Consumer Quarterback Show for Brandon Rhimes. The Consumer Quarterback Show is a team, a group of like-minded professionals who partner together to provide our audience sound advice, knowledge and information to make them wiser consumers. We work with all types of business owners and aggressively promote our local economy. We're currently conducting interviews for our expert contributors. If you own a business or know someone who would benefit from the exposure our show provides, please contact us at 813-750-0550 or online at consumerqb.com.
You're listening to the consumer quarterback, Brandon Rhimes, cutting through your typical media nonsense and offering you a rational and unbiased perspective on current events and life in Tampa Bay, online at consumerqb.com.
All right, welcome back. Thanks for sticking with us. Brandon Rhimes here, your host of the Consumer Quarterback Show, helping you win in your real estate deals. If you're buying, selling or investing, we would love to talk to you. And we've got some property listings here, hot property listings in Tampa Bay. Uh, we'd love to talk about 304 East Waters Avenue, vacant land, commercial property available in Tampa, 304 East Waters Avenue. It's over by Bird Street and I-275 over there and a great buying opportunity here in Tampa Bay. It's almost a half an acre of land, you've got 95 feet of frontage, about 40 to 50,000 vehicles a day driving by, 304 East Waters Avenue, great location for maybe a car dealership, something along those lines. 6513 South County Line Road in Plant City, South County Line Road. This has a spring fed creek in the back, five acres. You can actually put two structures on the property, one home and maybe one, uh, industrial type of building to run, to operate a contractor's business out of, 6513 South County Line Road in Plant City. Uh, great buying opportunity here, uh, in beautiful Tampa Bay. You can see all of our listings at platinummvp team dot kw.com. All right, we're going to welcome in Victor in studio. Victor, welcome in.
Thank you, how you doing?
Chad Irrigation.
Yeah, sure.
In the house, and I didn't want to take a stab at your, your last name, I forgot how to pronounce it.
Lanero.
Lanero, got it, got it. So yeah, man, so thanks again, uh, you know, a lot of times with our, with our expert contributors, I talk about how, you know, we work together and then we end up kind of being, you know, expert contributors on the show, but you know, from firsthand experience, I can say it was first-class organization, such a great job putting in our irrigation on our home and it was kind of an interesting project, you know, that you did.
Thank you. Yeah, we put, especially we took your house from city water and put it to start pulling off of Lake Tarpon, so it'll, you won't have crazy water bills just to keep all your plants alive and so it's all working pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's really neat. You're able to, and we went over the seawall, you know, you kind of go through, over the seawall into the lake and we put, we ended up tying a buoy out there because, you know, it's a little bit shallow over there in the lake, but put a little buoy out there.
And it's, and we put a self-cleaning filter in so you don't have to pull it out every few months and clean it, it'll just clean itself every time it runs and, um.
That's pretty cool. So how does a self-cleaning filter work? How does that, is it kind of backwash or something?
Yeah, it backwashes every time the pump turns on, it feeds water back down a separate line, back into the filter and it blows out the filter.
Oh, interesting.
Every time that it runs, so nothing gets stuck on the outside of it.
Got it, okay. So, so yeah, Chad Irrigation, local to Tampa Bay. Uh, again, we always talk about supporting the local economy, local companies. How important is that right now, you know, with everything going on out there?
That's very important. It's like, I mean, I bought my house, I used all customers of ours to buy my house. I used.
Right.
You know, private lenders and everybody that uses Chad Irrigation, I've used all them when I bought my house instead of using people that I didn't know.
Yeah, home inspectors, Realtor, I mean, the whole wheel, I mean, that's what's great about the real estate market is that it's just, it feeds so many different pieces and I think that's what Sandy was alluding to earlier. When we start hiking up impact fees, it's like, wow, how many real estate deals are we going to kill that year? So then it kind of works against us.
Because you figure if it goes up $10,000 on a house, that could change people buying it, you know?
Absolutely. Price people out of the market.
Right. They might not be able to afford that extra 10,000.
Exactly, yeah. So it pushes people in a position where they're, you know, in a bad position there. So Chad Irrigation, tell us some about, some of your, your success stories, recent success stories. I know you're putting in all types of different systems and some, uh, you know, helping folks again, get off of that city water, which is very expensive.
Right. So if you don't have, if you don't have the ability to have like a well drilled, or if you don't have, um, like a lake by your house that you can pull water off of, um, there's a lot more stuff, um, I don't know how to explain it, like, they're really big in the irrigation industry now is getting to use less water.
Right.
So like the newer sprinkler heads, they, they have like pressure regulated heads, they have low volume heads.
Hmm.
Um, they have heads that when they break, they actually have a stop leak in them. So they'll literally, they don't flood your yard, they just shoot a little line up in the air.
Yeah.
They have clocks.
You mean when somebody takes your circle drive and just cuts off the corner and busts your sprinkler, like happens a lot?
Right, because if a broken sprinkler heads, you can lose anywhere from five to eight gallons of water a minute that it runs.
Wow, that's a lot.
You know, and when you're paying for that at city water, it can get really expensive really fast.
Yeah.
So they have newer heads now that, um, they have stop leak in them, they have, there's a lot, like we got, um, it's called Water Star Certified. It's a program now where when you're building a new home, um, it's like Energy Star.
Let's save that for the next segment. We're coming into our break. When we come back, Victor's going to describe, uh, some of the newer, uh, different systems that are in place and they're saving water. I think that's where we're going there. Chad Irrigation, Victor's in the house here, uh, talk about that. Also coming up, we've got Sam McCown, he is a coach, he's a life coach, business coach. Uh, find out more about that later in the show. Plus our feel-good story of the day, restaurant owner spent $2,000 of his own money to promote his competitors. Find out about that, Consumer Quarterback Show, consumerqb.com.
This is Chris Voss, former FBI lead hostage negotiator and owner of the Black Swan Group. And you're listening to Consumer Quarterback Show hosted by my friend, Brandon Rhimes.
To get in touch with Brandon, call 813-670-7372, online at consumerqb.com.
Johnny, you ready? All righty, in that case, everybody, please stand by.
Five, four, three, two, one. You're listening to the consumer quarterback, Brandon Rhimes, online at consumerqb.com. Brandon is Tampa Bay's number one consumer advocate for real estate and financial advice. Call Brandon today at 813-670-7372.
All right, welcome back. Thanks for sticking with us. Brandon Rhimes here, host of the Consumer Quarterback Show. This segment is brought to you by Replenish IV Solutions. Say hello to our friends, Steve and Alisa Gunnan over at Replenish IV Solutions. And if you want to feel energized, hydrated and replenished, uh, they've got a great opportunity for you, Gandy Boulevard, South Tampa, or they can actually come into your home or office. They've got a Bears location, Wesley Chapel location, so it's a safe and effective way to restore your body's systems with crucial vitamins and nutrients, enabling them to perform at their optimal level. So I love going in, I get hooked up with the vitamin infusion drip, putting all the good vitamins in there and fighting off a lot of the viruses. So reach out to our friends, Replenish IV Solutions. Make sure you let them know the real estate quarterback sent you. Take them up on those special offers and incentives. All right, we've got some hot properties here in Tampa Bay, 5402 US Highway 92. And this is a bar for sale. Anybody out there want to own a bar? Have you ever thought, man, I'd like to own a bar, that'd be cool. I've got pool tables, I've got jukebox, I've got all that fun stuff. 5402 US Highway 92, we've got a bar for sale out there. Uh, the Finish Line Saloon, I believe is the name, is 1,900 plus square feet, turnkey establishment, profitable bar, four COP beverage license, centrally located fixtures and furnitures included, right here in Plant City. Great real estate opportunity, great investment opportunity here in Tampa Bay. Uh, we've got affordable property for sale as well, 5103 Rose Place, this is in Pinellas Park, I think it's just under a hundred thousand dollars, small, little, affordable, single family, uh, property here, 5402, uh, 5103 Rose Place, Pinellas Park, two bedroom, one bath, great opportunity to own real estate here in the hottest real estate market in the United States, that is Tampa Bay. You can see all of our listings at platinummvp team dot kw.com. All right, we've got Victor Lanero in the house, Chad Irrigation, local business, again, support the local economy. We're talking about water savings there.
Right, um, there's a lot more stuff, like builders can apply, um, when they're doing like big projects, um, and they can get, um, grants from the government, from the counties in the state of Florida from, um, for putting in water saving systems. Um, it's, there's a lot more to it than the irrigation canal has to be, um, 50 to, 50 to 60% low volume, it has to be all low value, or native Florida plants, you know, there's a lot to it. But they'll give you, I want to say up to like $25,000 if you do it for the, for bigger projects, um.
Well, that's a good idea to research. I mean, if you're putting in a development, you're putting townhomes, apartments, something along those lines.
It's with the water. It's with the water saving or water management.
Florida Water Management?
Yep.
Yep. And it sounds like also it has something to do maybe with that LEED certification, the L E E D S LEED certification. You know, something along those lines.
And you can, you can retrofit systems to use a lot less water, which would save you money, you know, on commercial buildings, on residential, if you're spending a ton of water, money on irrigating stuff. And they say that, um, a conventional irrigation system, um, by going from that to a Water Star system, you save about four swimming pools a year worth of water.
Wow.
Between the two different systems.
Wow.
Um, Water Star, Water Conservation Systems are a lot more expensive. Everything that goes involved in it costs a lot more. So that's, you know, but over the long run, you'll make, you know, you'll save a lot of money not wasting water.
Yeah. And that's a big part, I think, too, when I was, you know, talking with Sandy earlier about sustainability. You know, we've got all these people coming down, uh, and they're already talking about, uh, passing. Uh, we have our water quality expert, Fred De Felice that comes in. He's with waterscience.us. He's got these great, uh, systems he can add to your home, kind of clean your water as you're drinking it. And, you know, got one for this, this, the kitchen sink as well, where you get your tap water to drink. But he, he talks a lot about how, you know, we're pretty close to critical mass here, especially Pinellas County, very dense populated, you know, peninsula type of a county. Uh, you're looking at potentially utilizing, um, the reclaimed water. You know, so the stuff you flush turns into the stuff you actually drink and use for cooking, which is a scary thought. I know they do it pretty cleanly. They add chemicals and things of that nature, but, uh, it's a scary thought. So these are things that can all help us cumulatively, you know, as a community, work together to, you know, at least prolong that until maybe that happens or maybe eliminate it.
When we were getting certified, they said some of the counties are going to start implementing it into building code, where the houses have to go that way. Um, that because of that, they said like, and I don't remember the exact charts they showed us, but basically like people think like sodas and bottled water uses up a lot of water, but it's actually only like 2% of the water use. I think it's like 75 or 80% of water usage in Florida is irrigation, is lawn irrigation water.
Yeah, farm, I could see that farm, vegetables. Yeah.
So they, like a lot of the counties have reclaimed water, but the problem with reclaimed water is getting to be where too many people are using it and they don't have enough of it in the summertime. So they start running out of it.
Oh, I see. Yeah. Because you've got a population change, the, the density and population and the number, the sheer numbers change. So that would, that, I believe that would affect. And matter of fact, Fred De Felice also, he also talks about when the, you know, a lot of snowbirds, some people don't like to be called snowbirds, but you know, for argument's sake here, the snowbirds go back up north. You can act, there's actually a, a void in the lines. So a lot of the lines, that's where you see a lot of your pinholes develop because now you've got oxygen in the lines and it, and it oxygenates the pipes. You could probably tell a little bit about that as well with your, you know, being involved in the irrigation in the water industry.
Yeah. Cause and with, when you're in the summertime too, like that's when everybody uses all their water for irrigating. So then people's water bills go up when their electric bill goes up. So they're getting double whammied every summer.
Right.
Where if you could at least cut down on your water usage, you're going to get the same irrigation, but just use less water.
Yeah.
You know, you can save yourself a lot of money. I mean, I had one customer that went from city water to a well system finally, and they, they went from an $1,100 a month water bill to an $80 water bill.
Holy cow, that's a significant, over a thousand dollar savings by using Chad Irrigation. Uh, Victor Lanero here, expert contributor on the show, uh, in the construction industry for many, many years. Uh, we've got about a minute left, my friend. Final thoughts?
Um, we, we do a lot of irrigation. We can come out and give you free quotes to, you know, tell you how to change over to get, but have stopped using so much city water. Um, we also do drainage to get water away from your house. And give us a call and we'll get out there and.
And what's the best website?
Um, we don't have a website. They're building it right now.
Okay.
But they can, um.
Or a number? You want to give out a number? Hit the website. You can hit the website, consumerqb.com. And also if you, if you just look up online too, you can find Chad Irrigation as well. You'll see it there. 727, is that the right number? 938-3724?
Yes, sir.
Info@chadirrigation.com, info@chadirrigation.com. And of course, reach out to the show. Would love to put you in touch, uh, with Victor and his team. 813-7500550. Call or text that line anytime as well. 813-7500550. We'll put you right in touch with Victor and his team. And again, firsthand experience, he did a great job. The whole team did. Thanks again. We appreciate it.
Awesome.
All right. Good stuff. Stay, stay with us right here. When we come back, we're going to talk about coaching, business coaching, life coaching. Uh, Sam McCown on the Consumer Quarterback Show. He was actually introduced through us through Thomas King Florida Firearms Academy, longtime friend of the program. Uh, Sam's going to be here as well. And we are going to talk about our feel good story of the day. A restaurant owner spent $2,000 of his own money to promote his competitors. Interesting story in our feel good story of the day. We'll be right back.
Hey, I'm Ken Shamrock and you're here with Consumer Quarterback Show. And I say, Brandon Rhimes, knock out your competition.
To get in touch with Brandon, call 813-670-7372, online at consumerqb.com.
This is Diane Vance with Fairway Independent Mortgage, a member of the Consumer Quarterback Show. Please give me a call for any of your mortgage needs. We do all sorts of loans. If you would like information on a mortgage, you can text me or call me at 727-647-8199. I will take care of all your mortgage needs. Go to my website at dianvance.com.
Ian Beckel is here with my man, Brandon Rhimes, AKA The Real Estate Quarterback. Brandon, what's happening with the market?
Thanks Ian. We are in a low inventory market. So any of our listeners are homeowners and would like a free comparable market analysis or a 2.5% listing, we will honor this for the first three listeners who call or text in. 813-773-1253. Free CMA and a 2.5% real estate listing at 813-773-1253.
Check out consumerqb.com. Selling commercial or residential property? Don't leave money on the table. List with the Platinum MVP Team at Keller Williams Realty. I'm Brandon Rhimes. Reach me at 813-670-7372 or platinummvtteam.com.
You're listening to the Consumer Quarterback, Brandon Rhimes, cutting through your typical media nonsense and offering you a rational and unbiased perspective on current events and life in Tampa Bay, online at consumerqb.com.
And we're back. Brandon Rhimes here, Consumer Quarterback Show. Every day we tell you something positive here on the QB Show. All right. So a restaurant owner in Wisconsin spent thousands of dollars to support his competitors during these hard times for the restaurant industry. Adolfo Melendez, owner of Tex Mex Restaurant, uh, in Stevens Point, has offered, has bought more than $2,000 in gift cards to restaurants, uh, in his community to raffle off to his customers. He took the money out of his own marketing budget and he says, quote, "If you help one person and another person helps another, that will help a lot," Melendez told KWOW. And he says, uh, Melendez says he got the idea to help his restaurants after a local realtor company helped his restaurant at the beginning of the pandemic. Quote, "They did something where people voted for their favorite restaurant and I got second place. So they brought in $300 in gift cards for me. And right after that, I said, I'll probably do something similar." So that's a pretty cool story how, you know, the, the snowball starts. Random acts of kindness, like we talk about here on the Consumer Quarterback Show. All right, let's go to the phones. We've got Sam McCown on the line. Oh, we don't have him yet. Okay. So Sam, we're looking to get Sam. He's gonna, he's a business coach. He's a life coach and he's going to talk about, um, where have all the good leaders gone? So leadership, I love that. I love that topic. It's such a great topic. And he's going to have four questions to ask when you are stuck. So when you get stuck in business life, uh, four questions to ask. And by the way, this segment is brought to you by the Billmar Beach Resort, the official hotel partner of the Consumer Quarterback Show. That's the Billmar Beach Resort on beautiful Treasure Island, Florida. And I love going over there. I love taking my family. They've got two pools on site, Sloppy Joe's Beach Bar and Restaurant. And they've got a huge beach as well. Longtime friend of the program. Say hello to Clyde Smith. He's the general manager. And make sure you let them know that the real estate quarterback sent you. And you can take them up on those special offers and incentives. Treasure Island, Florida, uh, one of the best places to go on vacation. And yeah, we've got a lot of great partners here with the show. And, you know, we talk a lot about real estate and credit and finance here on the program. And you look at, you know, overall just what's happening right now. Um, not only, you know, political, geopolitical, a lot of, a lot of nonsense happening out there. You see these different, um, you know, types of things happening, uh, from a business perspective here in Tampa Bay. We like to bring on folks that can help change you, change your life and your business. So we're going to bring Sam McCown on the show now. Hey, Sam, welcome to the show.
Hey, Brandon, how you doing today?
I am well. Thank you. And yourself?
Pretty good, pretty good. It's a little overcast here where I'm at, but it's a beautiful day in Florida.
Hey, that's right. Uh, sunny and 75 most of the time this time of year. Beautiful place to live, work and play. And, and we love having, you know, folks like you on the show. It, it helps, uh, you know, a lot of listeners on, on our program, they're looking for this type of motivation. They're looking for, you know, insights into the business world and life coach. And so tell us a little bit about, you know, where have all the good leaders gone? What are you, what are we missing in leadership today?
You know, I like to, uh, look at, at some of the leaders, uh, in past, you know, Brandon, you're a sports person. And, uh, I would say one of the best leaders in sports was John Wooden.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you know, you go back and you look at his record and everything else, but here's the thing. He didn't just develop basketball players. He developed human beings. He developed great leaders in our society. And if you look at some of the folks that came out of his program, the Kareem Abdul Jabars and, and folks like that, there were awesome people and awesome leaders, you know? And there's a bunch of great, uh, ballplayers and coaches and stuff like that out there, but I'm telling you what, I, there, there will never be another John Wooden.
How many championships, by the way? I did, I think it was over 10, right?
Yeah, it was. I think, uh, he won, uh, 10 NCAA titles during his last 12 seasons, including seven in a row from 67 to 73.
That's amazing.
And you loved to hate him.
Yeah. And then some people will say, oh, well, it might not have been competitive as much back then. You still had a lot of colleges competing in college basketball back then.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. All over the place too. It just, you know, you didn't, uh, I, I would say the ACC and the SEC weren't as strong as they are now.
Right.
Um, but, uh, but I was living on the East Coast when he's winning all those West Coast titles, you know?
Yeah.
So, but yeah, but you know, he, he just, uh, he just epitomized what, what a good leader is, you know? Um, because he was what he's, uh, I guess what you would describe, he was at the pinnacle of leadership. He always, always, always developed people. He, people wanted to be around him because he lifted them up.
Yeah. And there's something to be said for that, you know, whether it's a good pastor at your church or just a friend that you have, or maybe a colleague that's always saying, you know, hey, you, you can do it. You'll get the next deal. You know, you're, you're saying, hey, I lost that deal. Oh, that's okay. You'll get the next deal. You know, maybe a spouse, you know, having someone that's going to reinforce you. To me, that, that is just an invaluable partner or friend to have.
Oh, it is. It is. And that, and, and so many people don't do that today, you know? Uh, I, my company is faith based and I believe we do not walk through this world alone. And that means the human interaction also. I was talking to some friends today and, you know, business folks are struggling. I, I don't care what, what your business you're in today, coming out of this pandemic and, and the craziness that we've all suffered through.
Yeah.
Um, you know, your real estate business may be booming and thriving right now, but you have to be prepared for next month, six months, a year down the road. And if you don't have people on your team that you can go to and that can lift you up, support you and take you to the next level, when hard times hit, you're stuck. You're done, you know? And so many business people are there right now in, uh, they didn't pivot. They didn't do the things they needed to do when the pandemic hit. And they're still thinking, when does it get back to normal?
Right. So what do you, what do you do in that situation? You get, you gotta be proactive. You gotta make things happen, right?
Yep. I think so. I think there's, there's four things you, you really need to look at. Okay. One, the first thing is you got to make one decision at a time. So today, what, what decision do you need today? There's five areas of our lives that we need to make those decisions in. And that has to do with your, our physical health, our spiritual health, our personal growth, our family, and then the freedom flow of time and money is one that I like to call it. But there may be a decision that you need to make today to put one foot in front of the other. So the first thing I would ask you is, what is the one decision you need to make today to start propelling you forward? Okay. And it may be in any one of those five areas. For me, quite frankly, yesterday was I needed to get back to the gym. I am not a gym person. I, you know, I used to run. I ran because of a girl. Okay. It had nothing to do with how good I was, right? Okay. And so, uh, but I, I, it's not enjoyable to me and I'm not a gym person, but I met some folks, uh, and had the opportunity to sign up. Uh, they're getting ready to open in March. And so I made that step yesterday. But one decision at a time. Uh, point two I'd like to make is you are the expert on you. Why are you listening to some of the negative input that you get? You have to look at yourself and say, yes, I am the expert on me. I do need a coach. I do need some, uh, a cheerleader, but I am the expert on me. Point number three I'd like to make is, um, be careful who you share your dream with. Because even our families sometimes look at us and say, are you nuts? You know? And so, and, and so be careful because you don't, you don't want that person or those people in your lives are just going to bring your dream down. So be careful who you're sharing your dream with. And then the fourth thing to, to think about is, who is that group of like-minded people? Maybe, uh, those are smarter than you, you know? I, I try to always never be the smartest person in the room, but who's that, uh, like-minded people? Get around them and, and let them help propel you forward. Because if you don't have that group of people, if you don't have that, uh, whether you call it a mastermind or an executive roundtable, or whatever you want to call it, you're trying to do it alone. You can't do it. Those, those would be four, four decisions people could make today that would propel them forward.
Yeah. It, it comes down to your influences, you know, who's influencing you, who you're allowing to influence you. What is your peer group? Who you hanging out with? Who you listening to? Uh, what are you watching? I, I think for the youth today, uh, you know, Sam, the youth is, they're, they're Instagramming it. They're swiping on their phones all day, looking at probably not the most, uh, intellectual stimulating thing, right? That's, I guess a nice way to say it.
TikTok dances.
There you go. Yeah. TikTok dances or some, you know, kind of some, just, you know, stuff that's not really going to propel them in the right direction.
Right.
And I think that's one of the keys for, you know, not only young folks, but you know, people of all ages to, where are you getting your information? What are you listening to and what, what's influencing your subconscious mind?
Right. And if you're only listening to people you agree with, you're never going to have that other. So here, here's the thing.
Right.
We were raised not to talk about two items, politics and religion. And what are the two biggest issues we have in our country, facing our country today? That is a fact that we don't know how to talk politics. We don't know how to talk religion. So therefore, we're right. Nobody else's opinion matters. And so I, I think that if, you know, I, I was raised by, by great parents and, uh, um, but it was not polite society to talk about religion and politics. And I think that that has hindered us in our, our interactions.
Yeah, it's such a, it's, it's almost kind of a weird rule when you think about it, because especially where we've come, how we've come full 60 and so many people are apathetic. Uh, and that's, that's why we got a lot of the, you know, stuff happening in, in the world that we do right now. But, uh, when you, when you look at politics, politics is life. Life is politics. You know, things, things that you shouldn't say or don't want to, you know, traditionally at the dinner table, you know, that's life. That's affecting your, your taxable income. That's affecting, you know, who, how we're letting people into our country or whatever the rules are. You know, whatever area you're looking at, politics is life. So it's kind of an interesting point you bring up there, Sam.
Yeah. I, my, uh, my wife is Ukrainian. Okay. And came to this country legally, went through all the process and everything else and, and did all the paperwork. We did that with, uh, my mother-in-law also. But they look at politics, uh, in, in an entirely different aspect. There's a freedom here that they didn't have growing up. She grew up Soviet Union. Okay. You had one political view. And, and so, uh, so there's a lack of understanding, I, I believe on, and even young people, uh, of the freedom that we do have. And if we don't understand the system and what's going on, then we're going to lose those freedoms.
That's right. Absolutely. Uh, so we've got about a minute left or so. Talk a little bit about, you know, how you can help folks out there. I know you do some keynote speaking and you do some mentoring, coaching. Talk a little bit about that and maybe who you're looking to connect with.
Okay. Thanks, Brandon. I, uh, do a lot of, uh, one-on-one coaching and mastermind groups. Uh, you know, I'm looking for folks who want to grow their business. I'm, I'm looking for folks who want to grow themselves and develop into the person or the leader that they want to be. I use a lot of foundational stuff, uh, from the John Maxwell team. I do, uh, some coaching through Kingdom Advisors and some places like that. I'm looking for folks who just want to grow and don't want to walk through life alone. We, uh, do a lot of financial coaching also, and that's a, a topic that is really tough right now. We, uh, do a lot of financial coaching also, and that's a, a topic that is really tough right now. And most of the, I'll be honest with you, Brandon, most of the folks who come to me for financial coaching are at a place where bankruptcy is one of the biggest options on the table. And it just breaks my heart.
Yeah. And it's like they waited too long, right? To reach out.
Yeah. They waited too long. And so, um, and I, I always do a, a complimentary, um, coaching session, at least 30 minutes. Uh, it's on my website, salmonreadalive.com, or you can email me at sam@aliven@peace.com. And we will, uh, set you up with a 30-minute complimentary session and you can decide what direction you want to go. And, uh, we can go from there.
Excellent. Yeah. Hey, that's a good way to do it. Just take, you know, take Sam up on the offer, check him out online, salmonreadalive.com. And, uh, Sam McCown here, keynote speaking, coaching, you know, I think that's such a big part, getting coaching, getting mentoring. Uh, so great job today, Sam. Thanks so much. Uh, a great show, uh, as well, uh, from Sandy Merman and Victor Lanero as well here on the Consumer Quarterback Show. And we want you to please go out there and consider committing a random act of kindness. Do something kind for one another. Be a force for good in the community. Donate some time, donate some blood, lots of ways that you can do something positive. And we'll see you next time right here on the Consumer Quarterback Show, consumerqb.com.
You've been listening to the Consumer Quarterback, Brandon Rhimes. Whether it's real estate, consumer or financial advice, let Brandon call your next play. Contact Brandon Rhimes at 813-670-7372. That's 813-670-7372. Online at consumerqb.com. And join us next time for the Consumer Quarterback Show.